Sorry.
All right, thank you. Joe Minus, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. If you've not signed in, that would be a sweet time to do that. Okay, everybody's here but Pete, I see. At this point, we are here to talk about the sewer facilities report review. Century West got this to us. Might be able to leave, yes. And you guys received it then, and we are then doing a little like reading. And so now Dan's gonna come up and give us his knowledge. And then we're gonna hold David to fire too, probably. So, okay? All right, welcome, Century West.
Thank you. Trying to let you speak. Oh, all right. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so you have the facility plan there in front of you. We'll kind of skip straight to the recommendations because I think that's kind of the what everybody's interested in. The alternatives, basically outline three alternatives. The first one is not so much an alternative as it is a requirement just to keep the plant in operation. So the first alternative one was basically updating books existing, bringing the facility up to meet the current requirements, specifically for the EPA Class 2 requirements for redundancy. And then alternatives two and three are essentially what you do with the wastewater once it's been treated, specifically during the summer months, as been reported, as you can see in there. Discharge limits just keep getting tightened up. And eventually, they're gonna be so tight that it's gonna be impossible for any town to make, to meet the limits during the summer specifically. They're keep cranking down on how much is allowed to be discharged and specifically the temperature TMVL, which will basically make it impossible for the town to achieve the permit limitations in the summer. So alternative two and three deal with what to do with wastewater during summer months. So alternative two would be to store it during the summer months and then discharge during the winter months, which is basically a large storage facility. And then alternative three was the store for a short time and then irrigate onto nearby field. There's property available that appears to meet the requirements, at least on an initial evaluation. And so those are what we're looking at. And I guess we'll be happy to take questions. That's what will kick off the discussion.
How come there's no mention of dollars or costs in this report?
I believe there is.
I haven't been able to find it.
They're kind of in the paragraph format. So essentially, I think there is, I mean, cost estimates are in there. The appendix has the actual cost estimates. The basic improvements to the treatment plant were in five million dollar range. And then the disposal methods, either storage or irrigation, is another five to eight, depending on the various alternatives.
In an estimation, what is the life of this next upgrade gonna be regardless of what we choose?
It should be a minimum twenty here. I mean, I would project longer than that, but that's kind of the design timeframe, the twenty year horizon. You don't see the town outgrowing the improvements in that time, and so it's a matter of maintenance to some degree.
Grab the crystal ball.
Okay.
Is there ever gonna be an issue with ground application, like those versus a full sewer of full treatment, where it comes out of the plant and is virtually ready to go into the creek? Or are we always gonna have to have a system where we are storing the product until we can discharge? Do you kind of get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think so. To get to a facility that would achieve to be able to discharge to the creek at all times, is that?
Yes.
All right. So as mentioned, the discharge limits keep getting tighter and tighter, which means the level treatment required keeps getting higher and higher.
That's why the crystal ball is.
Right, yeah. So right now, Class A treatment is the highest that's achievable. It's essentially recycling, it's treating the wastewater to achieve drinking water quality. It's not used for drinking water directly, but can be used for groundwater discharge, irrigation on various sites without the concern of using parts and other locations for irrigation. But it's, that's the highest level. The discharge limitations they're talking about are so tight that it can't even be measured. And so couldn't even be more restrictive than can be possibly achieved with current technology.
So as time and creek gets more purified eventually in the future, they're gonna find more things to get more pure?
That's what the last fifty years have shown us. I mean, we, a lot of this has been driven by the river keepers. You know, so they're pushing limits that are even more restrictive than what state or federal requirements would be. The other thing is temperature. There's, I mean, there's only so much you can do to affect the temperature of water with discharge. There's certain technologies, but at some point, you're putting more and more effort into cooling water to get the temperature that they require, and then you discharge it into the creek, which is eventually gonna achieve ambient temperature anyway.
So going down what Roy was talking about, first of all, and we don't even know what's gonna even happen with the sludge that is here, what we're gonna do with that?
Yeah, right now, so the basic improvements would be to double the size of the drying beds, so that we can handle that. The solids disposal itself, that can be hauled to our tech, that's what a lot of communities are doing. So if you recycle there, there's a cost there. The town could also be looking into coming up with their own land application site, that has its own level of permitting required. You have to find a site that you could dispose of the solids on through the land application process. But there is treatment or disposal options for the solids.
So do you see in the future that there will be no more discharging into the creek whatsoever?
That, I've not heard that yet.
It could happen.
Well, crystal ball again, you know. Right now, it's, they're making it so tight that you can't do it in the summer. I mean, the temperature is a big thing, where you can't achieve the temperatures in your discharge. And also the other, you know, dissolve oxygen and various other things, because the creek is impacted through no fault of TECO, but it's, you know, it's impaired water, and so it's enlisted as such, so it's under extra scrutiny.
So going down the young Roy was talking about, if it is, you have to look at the future, where if they're planting all the trees along the creek, then eventually the temperature of that creek is gonna be down.
That's the intent, yeah.
So it's gonna be harder for us.
Yeah, the, hopefully it'll be, I mean, the idea there is so that the ambient temperature of the creek will eventually be improved. That wouldn't necessarily impact your permitting requirements, but it would, they would blend together. The problem, it's very difficult to change the temperature of wastewater without doing something. That's another level of treatment. The way they do it in some facilities, I'm thinking of Lewis Center, the paper mill, they do a filter where the water trickles down through a big cooler, and there's fans that blow air up through it. And that, you can approach ambient temperature and dew point doing that way, but you can't necessarily achieve the temperatures that they're requesting. So the temperature is a hard thing to get around.
Oh, I would think that they cooled the creek by the trees, that it would stand more of the warmer temperature before it gets into the level where they think it's harmless.
Yeah, there is.
For instance, if the creek's fifty degrees and ours is, and it drops down to forty-five, and ours is at fifty-five, it stands to have a little more cushion before it's harming, but maybe that's.
Right, yeah, there's, so that's, you know, you're getting into mixing zone dynamics there. And so, you know, where you discharge, it could create a point area that's of higher temperature. So it, yeah, that's all, that's somewhat your red goal at this point.
I think it's important to understand that we're not the only guys doing this.
Exactly, yeah.
Spokane, I went through their waste treatment plant, and, you know, they got no leduces.
No.
They got a grand application, and they go to the river.
Yeah.
And, I mean, but it's quite a process, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a very, I mean, huge and very, very complex treatment.
Do they have any violation issues?
I don't know specifically.
Not that they admit to it?
Yeah, I don't know specifically. I know they, all the dischargers have issues. PCB is a big issue for a lot of them, because it's so difficult to get rid of. The paper mill there in Spokane, that one, they toured that facility before, and they have trouble with the PCBs, not because they have any onsite or create any or use any, but the recycled waste print they bring in, there's PCBs in ink, and just storms run off a brain hitting the ink and running off through their storm system is violating their permit levels, so.
If I remember correctly, one of your options in your plans was something about crossing the creek to the other side of the creek. Again, I have seen no cost on that commute in light of what the cost might be.
Well, the, I mean, we're looking at one particular property that's, I think it's about a half mile from the treatment plant. There is a bridge there, so we could do hang under the bridge, so we're not like boring.
Is there a EPA or DOE?
Crossing, aerial crossing on the bridge is not an issue, no.
I just wondered what the cost was, can you tell me?
Yeah, aerial hanging from a bridge is not, you know, these are not like detailed design level estimates either, where, you know, we haven't tracked out each piece. They're kind of in general, you know, and you've got twenty-five hundred feet of pipe, so we come up with an estimate of that. The difference between the cost of trenching and hanging from a bridge is smaller enough that we didn't break that out separately.
One more question, if I may. Did you guys take a look or consider the, what do they call them, a plant in a package or a plant in a box?
Yeah, package treatment plant.
Did you guys do any investigative stuff on that?
Not, no, they're generally, those are for smaller flows and what you're dealing with. You've already got a treatment plant, it's already sized appropriately for what we're projecting for the next twenty years.
I guess a little, and I just have some comparisons.
Yeah.
So I don't know exactly what the process is supposed to be, but Dan, we have a lot of questions. I don't know, is this something where we can ask?
This is a good time.
Go through, and so maybe we could, each council member could take a chap, because there's some things per chapter here and stuff that we feel like need to be addressed.
Okay.
Before a lot of the desks, I'm not know what, Mike's bringing up this, I don't think the costs are really clear on some of these things. So how about if I start, start us off, so you have, you have right here in front of you as well. So on page twenty-two.
I don't have a copy with me, I'm sorry.
Oh, is there an extra copy somewhere?
Here, you can take one.
I mean, this is the. So the wells, oh, all the.
Okay.
The wells are identified as vertical shaft turbine pumps, but, and Stephen can throw it back to this. Is it true, well, number one is a line shaft turbine pump, but well five is a submersible?
Yeah, well five is a submersible, and then TruX is a line pump, or line shaft pump.
So I think that's been kind of important, that that difference is noted.
Sure.
Okay, and then also on page twenty-three, there's confusion on the wells and the water system. So your document shows that the TruX well is a primary water source for the city, and that the new well, well number five, is the backup emergency. Is that right, Stephen, or is it the other way around?
It's backwards. We shut down TruX when the demand is low, and we run on five most of the time.
And five is the one that's right here, right?
Yep.
So well five is your primary.
Yeah, so those are, that needs to be noted. And also, the document also states that the wells are in the Columbia River basalt group, but they not, not all of them are. Am I correct about that? Did I say that right? I'm gonna be looking at Stephen a while, I guess. So, but, so I'm not sure, what is the aquifer, is one on one and one on the other?
I'm not sure about the aquifers. I haven't, I haven't gotten that far into research.
Do you know?
Do you?
Or Dave, do you know?
The deep ones in the, but not the shallow one. The deep ones in the Columbia, the shallow wells, but not in the Columbia. It's in just a lower, lower aquifer, I mean, higher aquifer.
Okay, so I'll stick with chapter three, and then one of the other council members is gonna need help to ask some more other questions. But so also on page twenty-three, there seems to be an inconsistency in the number of metered connections in the system. So the document identifies four hundred and fifty-six metered connections. It also identifies three hundred and sixty-nine housing units in the system, and thirty-eight commercial municipal connections on page forty-six. So that'd be a maximum of four hundred and seven connections. That's a difference of forty-nine metered connections. So we need some clarity and discussion on why this difference, as it affects PRC calculations and potential rate increases. So the, so the, so page forty-six and twenty-three has some discrepancies.
All right.
And maybe you don't know off the top of your head.
I don't know off the top of my head, how many, how many does it say?
Dan, can I, can I bring something up right now?
Of course, yeah.
Because I'm just, we're all new at this, we'll kind of just kind of figure this thing out, walking our way through this. What should the procedure be here tonight? Should we be doing exactly what we're doing, or should we get together among ourselves, now that we've had a couple days to adjust this, and present these issues to you, and have another conversation in a little bit?
That's up to you. I mean, we're here, we want to be available, answer questions. But yeah, I mean, some of these specifics, I'm not gonna know off the top of my head, so. And I'm trying, I'm gonna make notes on them, and we'll, we can.
Right, you, I feel more comfortable, I mean, with your engineers and going through this stuff in your office instead of, I mean, I'm not trying to point out everything that.
I'm sure there's errors, I mean, there's.
Well, no, no, I mean, is the council, I mean, are we thinking about this clearly, or? Well, or do we want to just go right through?
One question, real quick, I may solve some of that, is you said you were gonna have drying beds. Well, now that we got Dwayne and Stephen here, what is your opinion on the drying beds?
I, Dwayne? Dwayne or Steve? Go ahead.
Stephen, you're the man.
I asked Dwayne to come in because I think he's.
I was scared, so I'm not talking to Dwayne's head. So I personally don't think that the drying beds are effective in this climate. They're only really effective in the warmer months. So if we were to do anything, I would want probably a belt press, and then to then go to the storage area that we have, that basically holds the bio solids, and basically skip the middleman of the drying beds. Because, I mean, I have what we call a winter bed, that basically just holds everything as far as bio solids, and then we clean it out slowly during the spring and summer months. But yeah, the other, the other ones aren't used, and they're not really effective except for in summertime.
Yeah, so.
So the cost of, so the cost of that is a huge difference between the drying bed you got set up and what Steve just said on the belt. And so there, and I think that kind of brings up a thing that probably needs more conversation on this.
Dave?
Yes, sir. Just stand up, though.
If you calculate how many hours it takes to empty the bed, then how many hours it takes to turn it over in the storage shed, like, two years worth, your time doing that will pay for a belt press. Simplify things. And that's, if you only got two guys, you need to make it simple.
Are you saying we need to make it simple for my two guys? I think that's what he just said.
Yeah, Stephen's point, yes, simpler the better.
So you suggested a belt press before, right? Is that?
It is, it is, yeah, we did mention it. So there's a cost to increase the size of the drying beds, and there'd be similar capital costs for the belt presses. The difference is, what comes in housing the belt press, because it has to be enclosed, there is, as part of the basic improvements, a new borehouse, so that could possibly be expanded to include a belt press area also. You know, it's one larger building that's probably less costly than two smaller buildings, but it's not gonna be half the price, so, I mean, it's dollars per square foot kind of thing. So there is a little more capital expense there, but, I mean, it comes down to the preference. I mean, there's communities that do either or both, and are happy with it. So belt presses, I mean, it's machinery, so it's mechanical, requires maintenance. But yeah, if drying beds aren't working for you, I mean, I'm.
They work better with a rope line.
Well, not really.
Not really. No, so it was your idea, Dwayne?
To put a rope on?
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's.
Sure.
Better than leaving it out.
It was better than it was getting rained on, right?
So, if I may?
Yeah.
How many drying beds in this area are you, were being put in in the last five years? I don't, I don't, I probably haven't been any put in the last five years. There's not many, any treatment plants. But how many have been taken out? Probably not many, but yeah, I know what you're going with. I understand, yeah. I know in, in, for example, they had running beds years ago, and they went to a belt press. And have been happy with it. Liberty Lake, I mean, yeah, there are more beds taken out than put in. I, I'm sure you're right, yeah. And the reason they're taken out is because they don't work.
Nice idea, right? They're rotten.
The tiles, the special tiles, they gotta be somewhere around seventy-five bucks for a twelve-inch square tile that has to go on the bottom. And then you gotta take those out, clean them, so that the bed continues to work. And you wanna talk about man-hours. That's, that's not fun job. So, I think that's all I should.
Don't get too close.
Dwayne wants a belt press, I got, I'll make note of that.
Question, has anybody been here in the northwest or eastern Washington been using slug bed drying rotation systems? Or are they just static systems?
As far as I know, they're all static. They're just, I mean, the sludge is deposited and allowed to evaporate out. So I don't think anybody's doing anything more advanced than that.
So I guess the, trying to figure out what is the end result here.
What, yeah, how do we want to do this?
I was under the impression that we had to make a decision about something, and I just feel like we're not anywhere close to that. And so where's that put us with applying for, don't we have to have something in to apply and get on the docket? But I just, I feel like there's a lot of questions, that, you know, there's some things that aren't correct necessarily here, and there's a lot of questions about really what the cost is gonna be. And I mean, I would really depend on that one document that kind of lined up what the sewer rates were gonna be for citizens against each of these. I think we really have to keep that plus man-hours and the overall. So maybe I missed exactly where that, I was hoping that would be one clear page in here as well. That was very helpful. There is a page for what, three?
It is, yes.
Okay, one, the first page of sixty-one, there's maybe just a little same to me as that other one. So, so what happens if we don't have a decision for you tonight?
Well, the deadline, so to speak, is the, is the end of the year to meet the, to be on the table twelve list for a college funding. That's not the only funding source, and it doesn't guarantee any funding, but we're already on the list. So we want to get your plan approved, so that doesn't become an issue. But we don't want to force you into a decision that you're not ready to make either. So again, we don't wanna, you don't want to make a poor decision just in order to be fast.
So I guess one question, if we don't make a decision, and we hold off a little bit, it goes into January, are we gonna be fined any by ecology?
No, no, there's, there's no, nothing writing on that. It's just, we're trying to get, eventually the stick is gonna get sharper and point along. But at this point, there's nothing, there's no sword hanging over the head.
And I guess where we're at, where's, you know, this plant will last a minimum of twenty years, I'll figure fifty.
That's more likely.
So, you know, that's a couple generations down. And so I think that we, as the people here in TECO, we need to make the best decisions we can get, because, you know, our kids are gonna be affected by this.
Yeah.
You know, on those same lines, Dave, with the information that Century West has presented to us, and the multiple pages of questions that we have, rather than him trying to remember what the answer is, wouldn't it be more efficient all the way around to give them our list of questions, so that you can get the proper answers, and then come back to us? Because right now, with what I have here, there is no way in heck we could make a valid decision on what's the best for TECO. And I would like to talk to somebody from the ONE, and I'm gonna have to research that, and what happens if we miss the deadline issue? Because I've heard that if this has no effect on us, we just bump it back here. So I'd like to confirm that, because that has advantages and disadvantages, and I wanna know what they are before we go forward.
Sure.
But I think if you have the, our concerns, so that you could look at them and answer them directly, that would help us. Because right now, I see a lot of conjecturing here.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Mike, if I may, mine's David Williams, I'm also with Century West too. One of the things I told Mayor, Mayor Roy, was that our communication, obviously, with ecology, been in direct contact about a lot of the concerns that we kind of projected you would have. We're dealing with that right now as well. So we're trying to do our best to give them the information and then get information back as quickly as possible to address what your concerns are as well. Within the timeframe that would be, you know, ecology has listed out for us. We're doing our best to do that, but those questions, like you said, if you've got them written down, we would definitely.
I mean, we could send your list tomorrow, the next day, we can help you.
Yeah.
Because it's, we'll be here until ten o'clock tonight with all these questions.
I told my wife we'll be late tonight.
Ten o'clock tomorrow night.
My concern is I still want to hear from the O N E.
It's important, yeah.
Not that they don't trust you.
No, 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 I, I would actually recommend you do it.
But that's the research that we need to do for, for ourselves. And as far as reaching the decision, I don't believe there's any way we can do that with any proper concerns for the people to live here. Because once we make that decision, we all have to live by it, and if it's the wrong one, we're hanging out.
And just to give you a reference to that, you were here when they put the new additions in the sewer plant in ninety. And they put those drying beds in, it was five hundred thousand dollars for that. And they were terrible. They had to modernize it and use the backhoe and everything, you know, I had to shovel that way.
Would you agree that we really don't have enough information?
No, we don't have nothing.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this could go in right now.
Correct?
Good, yes. And we have two months that E P, that ecology's looking at this to throw these corrections in. At any time during the process, if we choose to do this, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. So this, this is a unit that can go in, and we can still be working on this if we think we can do this in two months. But there's a lot here, man. I mean, this.
Well, we, I mean, we want the document.
To my high school education.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot there. But yeah, we, we want to submit what, what reflects the will of the community, yeah.
And so therefore, that's why, you know, the, where we needed this, where we should have, could have had this three or four months ago would, would have really helped our, our research on it. And the way I understand it, there's no penalty from ecology.
Right.
That, and, and the way I understand it, the original permit was through twenty-seven.
The original permit was through, that, that, twenty-eight, twenty-fourteen or twenty-nineteen, and they've just been continuing for, for years and years. As, as is the case with everyone, there, there's backlog.
And it might be, it might be different if we were violating.
Right.
Okay, but the fact that we're not violating, that we are in compliance and working our tails off by shoveling stuff dry hand, that it buys us a little bit of time that way, so.
Right.
I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand that correctly.
Yes.
I think it's imperative that they all know that if we don't get it to them by, by thirty-first, that we are automatically pushed. But, it, it, and okay, let me ask you this. If it does go in on the thirty-first, as correct as by what we have to say, and we still wanna throw stuff in, and then we still determine that we haven't, we still don't feel comfortable with where we're adding that two-month process, what are our provisions?
You can, you're not bound to anything yet, even if, even if the plan goes in, you're not bound to it. It's just, this is a, kind of your roadmap forward. If you want to revise it at some point, that can be done, it can be amended. Ecology wants to, if you choose to amend it, ecology wants to see it and see if they approve of the amendments, you know, that sort of thing. But yeah, it's, it can be adjusted or amended as needed before, before you start, like, spinning, pursuing real dollars.
Yeah, once you start grabbing their money, you're kind of walking down that road.
Right, yeah.
So at any point before then, we can probably withdraw and just say, hey, we. We can withdraw and just say, we're just, this is a movie target, we're not.
Right, yeah, yeah, you don't even have to withdraw. I mean, it, it's gonna, whenever we've submitted, it's gonna sit with ecology for a matter of a couple months before they give us any comments on it. And we can, we can revise in the meantime, resubmit. They're gonna send us a bunch of questions that we'll have to respond to. And we can amend at that point also. So, so it can be, you know, it can be adjusted and amended as needed.
Okay, I guess, I guess the hard question is, I know we're under contract with you guys to provide this. How long can that go?
Well, we, we wanna get it delivered this, as quickly as we can. But, I mean, we're, we're, we want to deliver the scope of work that we've been contracted to do. If we start talking about amendments and changes that are far off the path from, from where we're at. I mean, amending this to get it approval, that, I mean, we're gonna do that. That's, that's gonna be done. If we get to the point where this is completed and then we want to rewrite it or change something different, then that's probably a different scope of work that we would want to look at. But yeah, you, you're not gonna be bound to anything in the report at this point. And we can amend it as necessary to get what you, to get, we want the document that, that you're comfortable with.
You know, it's interesting, I'm not sure we're ever gonna get to a point to where we're gonna feel very good about this.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, then, yeah, the, the end result is it's gonna cost money because it's gonna require a project.
There's gonna be a whole lot of, okay, can we live with it? I think. So, if, if the council's all right with this, we've got our, our, our stuff that we can come up with, we will get this to Century West. And we will, I have another, we'll give them a, a little bit of, I don't know how much time. We can't hit the thirty-first window though, can we?
Well, when, when can you get it to us? We'll jump on it immediately.
It might be on your desk before you get home.
That's fine, that, that'd be good, yeah. That'd be helpful, actually.
Or at least, or at least the, the stuff we know about.
I, I would say if we can get it early in the week, we can try to get as much as we can.
We'll try to have a decision made tonight whether we wanna try to push through. I mean, and, and I'm getting a feeling that we're kind of really hopping on America around here really fast. And we're not even sure we've got a hand on it yet, so.
Right.
Well, Mayor, for your questions, just know that I will, I will be a resource and have a resource of proper people to really look through this. And Dan, yeah, and Dan being much more oversight on this has been a, a big blessing, really. So, okay, just, you guys get us the questions, you can send them to me, then directly.
Gotcha.
Get that disseminated and we'll get that handled later, so.
Okay, Councilor, are you guys good with that, or am I, am I speaking out of turn here? Dan?
And I think they, if they answers these questions, that's the first step. That way we have an informed decision. Because right now, we don't. And I think most of us are comfortable with submitting them our questions and see what comes back.
Okay.
We respect that too as well. You should have a lot of questions, you know? And then, and then, I mean, that just shows you guys are really putting due diligence on it. So, we would prefer that you do have the questions and us being able to respond to those, and obviously make the corrections that you've seen as well too. So, that's no issue for us. We, we wanna give, deliver the best product as possible, but we want your input as well, so please do.
Yeah, it's almost like I'm asking you what's on page four thirty-four of the Moby Dick.
There's a white whale.
Something about a whale, right?
Right.
All right, so, okay, are we good with that? Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this before you go. What's the one question we should be asking you that we're not? Because I don't know, that's why I'm asking you.
I mean, the, the question for, for the town is, what, what do you want? I mean, do you, do you want a storage facility? Do you want irrigation facility? Is that, is that what, what you're comfortable with?
We're looking at moving our side of hope. And that might, that might be the cheapest solution of all.
Just move the whole town?
Just, just relocate.
I think for whatever we're gonna get into this, that we could probably do that.
Yeah, it'd be pretty close, yeah.
There's some vacancies and, you know.
Yeah.
We're late.
Oh, no, right there, mile and a half.
Just, just go over.
Just, just go right on the other side. Okay.
Well, I, I will say, I think we want the most cost-effective.
Of course.
We, we want, that, that will be the, the least amount of headache for our public works.
Absolutely.
And that is not going to be astronomical for our ci, our citizens. There's a lot of angst about the, the cost to, to the individuals as well as to the city.
Yep.
So I mean, I, I don't know if that, I, I don't know if there's one that you see right now that is gonna fit that. Of course, I feel like the biggest obstacle is not knowing land, you know? Because we, we can say we need this land or that, but we don't have it in our hands. So, out of everything there, I mean, I know you're saying, what do we want? But we're also looking to you.
Sure.
What, what do you think is the best? We'll, we'll do that.
Well, I just, my own opinion, I think irrigation is, is probably the most likely. That's successful for a lot of communities in your situation. Works well in house for a long time. So, we think we have a plot of land that would work. They're investigating it and getting through the permitting process as a whole issue in itself. But, but that's not the only piece either. So, I mean, it's, it's not like that's the only, only chance we're to work.
And that's something to.
Yeah, so irrigation, we talked about that five years ago. I thought it was a terrible idea then, I think it is now. Doesn't matter where you go, you have to have a booster pump from the plant. You might have to have one on the hill or wherever you're going. Their eye maintenance, you can drive a hundred miles west and go ask anybody out there. I, I don't, if you have to pump from a lagoon and land and irrigate, how many millions of, or how many millions of gallons are you talking about irrigating during the summer? If, if you, if you have to hold, if you have to hold.
Four months.
For four months, so whether, you know, during the winter, during the summer. Now, you, you hold it during the, the summer, during the winter, you can discharge to the creek. So you don't have to struggle with the winter.
But that all depends on what, in the future, what we were talking about, and Dwayne's right, it's irrigation. You don't even know because you're gonna get all that water, minerals, all that stuff going into the ground. But also is, as the, as the, the ecology gets more stricter on that creek, you're gonna have troubles with irrigation.
Well, there's.
Because we're limited in it where we can do it.
Well, this, this ground, I mean, this is not Ritzville or most, like, you can't pump building gallons of water on five acres or twenty acres.
It's hard to play, it's hard to play.
I, I don't, I don't, just, I just don't see how it's possible. So, and then even the bio solids, you can't put those on a slope of more than, I think it's ten percent. So, where up here in these rolling hills are you gonna find enough room that doesn't, I mean, I saw an estimate in your grubbing and moving dirt at twenty-five thousand bucks. It'll cost you half that much to get the equipment down here to level a place off, so you, so you could possibly irrigate.
Okay, I don't know which, I mean, we have more, more than that for excavation costs, but.
Well, there, there was a chart there that showed, grubbing and, you know, grubbing, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, irrigation, I think irrigation's a worse idea than drying beds.
So we're over two.
Do you really tell us what you think, man?
Mark? You, twenty-one years out there pulling one of that thing. I have a decent idea.
That's right, that's why you're here.
What I'm talking about.
Problem with irrigation, like you said, saying on our area, you get down about ten feet when that water starts hitting that area. Instead of going down, it's just gonna go horizontal. And you look at the hillsides out there, when it rains just a little bit, all the springs come up. So, Dwayne hit it right on, that water will just move right along that hard cane clay. What would you recommend?
I, I'd recommend lagoons. At least you can do, you can do something to treat it, even if you had to run it back through the plant during low flow. And try and treat it with, with something that La Crosse has a, they're small. Like, take Fairfield, they don't always meet their demands. But whether it's cattails or whatever, and, and I think you need to have something closer to what Rockford is. You have a first stage, second stage, and maybe a third stage. And, and each time you move, you should be able to remove some nitrogen, some, you know. I, I know there's permit for cooling, but if you're discharging during the winter, then I think that'd probably go away.
I think you got a good idea.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just.
No. No, but I mean, you know, like, one of the things I, I haven't, I've examined for a while too. You kind of, I, people who I've always gone to are the maintenance folks, because they, they've seen it, you know, especially with roadways. So I'm, so I've, I've been on highways for a long time, so asking maintenance crews like what they think about ideas that we have has always been something that I've always done. And I would rather, you know, work, wanna design to best that the city's looking for, but I'd ask them that. I'd say, Dwayne, what's your thing, man, so?
Steve, what do you have for us? I used to farm down in southern Moscow. For a couple of years, we experimented with Lewiston's sludge, excuse me. They stockpile over the year, and then after harvest, they dry spread it. And I was wondering if that's something that's, is that possible, is that still done anywhere? But that, and that, then you don't have the, the irrigation, the equipment, process, all that kind of stuff, you just dry spread.
There's two, two separate things. You got solids to deal with, and then the liquid that's got treated, so the liquid effluent. So, liquid effluent is more, so you either gotta discharge it, store it, or irrigate it. The solids, once they're separated out, you either belt press or, or other, those that can be either land-applied, like you're, you're saying. But there is a permitting process to that too, like everything else. So, you have to find, find a site and, yeah.
Got one.
How many times did we use that?
I used it probably five, six years.
You used it quite a lot?
Yeah, and then, then the O E administrator, I'll call her, came in and wanted us to put a tarp out on the ground, drive across it, pick up the solids and weigh them compared to the area of the tarp. And by the time we did all that, and we're in the same boat, just twelve, twelve-year education here, I, I have no, no algebra, nothing. So they tell me, and trying to meet, so that, that was BS. She, she was the only one, I found out later, she was the only one that was making people do that. But you have to do seven soil samples, you gotta send them in, you have to compare the returns of the nitrogen, phosphorus, zinc, mercury.
You have to compare the returns of the nitrogen, phosphorus, zinc, mercury, seven or ten different things there they test for. And then you have to know what the farmer's gonna put on the ground. And you can max the difference between what's already there and what they're gonna raise. And you, so if you need a hundred pounds in for all week, you can't go over that hundred pounds.
That part about that's greater, it's naive.
No, it's not. So that's, that's why we've, the last five, six years, we called Bartek. And I, I, I know about Stephen, we were in a cycle where we could hold it two years. And we'd get down to maybe eighty-five to eighty-eight percent dry. Just holding it in that big shed out there. So, three, four thousand bucks a year to not have to put up with D O E biosolids permit lady, um, is worth it. And, and a lot of communities are coming to the same conclusion. Yeah, they, they don't make it, they don't make it friendly. You can, first year I applied out here on zinc nine's land, we're right across top of the ridge. Uh, they had to wait an extra two weeks because the solids held the moisture in that hilltop and the wheat didn't turn and the heads were twice as big as for us to deal. So it's benefit, but they don't make it easy to do. They forget we're disciplinary people.
Question for you guys, and with all that we're talking about, in your cost analysis and, and estimates, are you considering the, the long-term maintenance and, and equipment repair costs and all of that that we would have to be worried about? With whatever system we decide on?
It, it's, they're, they're similar, so, I mean, we're just assuming that you'd have the same, same maintenance folks, so.
I'd like to see that included in the estimates, so break it down so we know what it is.
That one would be kind of hard to do because you don't know.
Give us an idea, are we gonna have to hire another body, or we gotta buy more equipment, or? You know, if, if we know where we're going ten or fifteen years from now, that's gonna help the people that come behind us. And that's my concern, is not just now, what is down the road?
Well, and that's where I think you bring in Steve, because he's worked it, and Duane, and Steve, and just get their opinions, because they're the ones that shepherd, who gets started. And I get them on this, because they got that knowledge.
I, I've heard horror stories about lagoons. Yeah, they have, yeah, like this. They come up and they grow out and, you know, somebody does something wrong and all of a sudden, they're out of compliance and.
But the lagoons do help, the wetlands and everything else. They are to me more beneficial, because, you know, I've had to work with those. And yeah, Fairfield had some problems because they got, they built their lagoons, their holding ponds, on top of a swamp. And, uh, so if you go by there, see the duck ponds, the goose ponds, uh, in there, the islands, that's because the gas is coming up and making bubbles, so, um, but that can be fixed. I, I even asked Century West one time if I can drill a hole, half-inch hole in each one. But you know, lagoons, lagoons work and wetlands work better, you just have to go in that direction. And with our plant here, the size of the land we got, and, and I know that Duane had to move all that sludge and Steve moved that sludge. And the belt press is gonna be the best way for us to move that. And I think getting those two in, Mayor, talking to them or whatever it may be, getting their opinion on all this before we make a decision.
Yeah, for sure.
This is why we want you guys, you know, their questions. We'll take it one step at a time and then as we are able to, you know, funnel out the things that don't belong, we'll know more or less how it is we should proceed as well too. So if we can start just with the questions first and then proceed on to, it's almost like step A, B, C, D. You know, this'll, this'll be, we'll be much more informed about, you know, you'll be much more informed about how it is we come to our conclusion.
Crazy. It's a big crazy ride.
Yeah, it must be built on, built again.
As long as the rope don't break, right?
Yeah.
So I was just gonna ask, have any of the property owners been approached about any of the plans that we have?
Uh, there've been preliminary discussions, I think.
Like of late, or are you talking?
I don't know, I think it's reliable, I'm not really sure.
I've had conversations with, well, with. Yeah, at that point, we need to make sure that the rest of the family's included because, you know, make sure that everybody's aware that we're having these conversations. Angie talked to me and says, you know, could I copy her, when we start having this serious or? And, and we'll probably, this gives us maybe a little time, we can, I'll sit down with a couple of the landowners and get the, make sure that the one specific person who wants to be there is there.
Make the money, or be living around the wetlands and.
Well, I, I just, I, I, they just want good, good opinions and, and full knowledge of what's gonna go on. And that's, that's, I, I would want it too. Okay, all right, so I'll let you guys go home before it gets, and, and look for that soon.
Please do, you have my information, so.
Yeah, should I call him or you?
Um, I mean, you can call, contact me, that way I'm sending to the right people.
Got you, all right. Certainly.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you all for, you know, listening to us today.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else we need to address tonight, please? Anything else? Okay, at this time, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. If that's not adjourned, I like the motion to adjourn. Set it up and settle. Any discussion of the previous guy?
I.